Twice.
If anybody in the room is recording.
Yeah, Mary's recording.
Okay.
All right.
Kara will be here in ten minutes.
Oh, sure. By then, I hope we're done.
Hi, Ira.
Hello.
Hey, Ira, how are you doing?
I'm good. How are you guys?
You have a good New Years?
Yep.
Good.
Yep. And you?
Absolutely. In bed by eleven. AM.
At our age, that's once a month.
And I stayed up till one o'clock. Why on earth would you want to do that?
So, Ira, we're just waiting for Kara. She was held up at school. She's on her way.
Yeah, I just, I would just talk with her.
Okay.
So.
Okay, we're in the meeting. Kara was not here yet, so we got a referee.
I have Zoom.
Okay, you're Zooming us?
Yeah, I'm Zooming you.
Yeah.
We have feedback.
Pardon?
Feedback.
Yeah.
Where'd you have, where'd you have the new mic?
It's right in front of my, gee, I'm gonna move it away from the microphone here.
Okay.
I think it's okay now, TJ. I just had to turn the volume down.
Oh, okay.
I can. Get Mary to say something.
Mary, say hi.
Good evening, Ira. Happy New Year.
Okay, she's good.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, Mary. Same to you.
We've got Ira on Zoom.
Ira needs to turn up the volume.
You have to, there's no. Yeah. I've, you have to turn volume, if you want to control volume, that's on your end.
No.
Oh, it's on our end.
On our end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's that, Ira?
I, I can hear you fine.
Perfect, you're much better.
Okay.
You have to look back.
Yeah, I look back a little bit. We'll have to figure it out.
TJ, I'm gonna hang up.
Okay.
What happens here?
So, are we, we don't have minutes?
No, no, I was getting caught up. I had a nice, long, quiet day today, and I had a lot of things that went to the wayside.
Okay.
They changed over, so I'll catch up next week, I promise.
Uh, that's all right. Motion table, the recording of the previous night, second. All forever. What is that?
We can start, it's, it's because of that thing that. You can start talking about the expenditure report if you want, until Kara gets here.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to move?
Hey, Ira.
Yes.
Yeah, if we, if we turn off the, oh, we won't be able to hear you though. Yeah, we will. Turn off the, turn that off, the, the volume.
Well, that's.
Well, you've, it, it's, it sounds as though you've got volume going from the computer in the back of the room as well as from your audio setup that you've got up around the table.
Right there. Yeah, but it's not there. This is echoing.
See, it's, it's actually mine off of that, so if you shut off that volume, see if Ira can still hear.
This is what I just had to turn up because we couldn't hear Ira.
Okay.
Can you speak, Ira?
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh.
No, we need, we need this volume up.
Cause I. I'm wondering if I put this off. How sensitive is if you put it over there on the shelf to pick it up? I'm not, I'm just saying on the back.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll be so bad. Hey, Ira, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, no wonder I turned this thing off.
Well, I think that's gonna work, TJ.
Smart phone connected.
Okay, so you can hear me now?
Yes, I can.
All right.
Yeah, not much of an echo left.
Yeah. Little glitch I have to figure out.
So I put down a motion to move to
B.
New business B. All departmental expenditure report.
Okay, you can go through that.
We're halfway through, so fifty percent, right? And when Kara gets here and can we have to do that, she said, well, you guys.
Oh, sure. You know what? I'm thinking about this. If, like, this comes out once a month?
No, every two weeks.
Every two weeks. Cause it would be nice to have a date on.
It should be at the bottom.
At the bottom where? Okay, me too. All right.
Yep.
I wasn't looking all the way down.
That's all right. There's a lot of numbers on this paper.
Yeah. Have we heard anything about, from the Highway Department, um, getting a new employee?
No.
Yes.
What was that, Ira?
Yeah, well, so we reposted the positions. When did we do that? About a week or so ago?
Yeah.
Actually had several, several candidates over the weekend, late last week and over the weekend. Uh, some of whom have licensing, have their CDL. Um, anyway, uh, so there are at least a couple of candidates that look promising. I spoke briefly with Dave today.
Yeah.
He had reached out to some of them, was reaching out to more. Uh, one that he spoke to, the, you know, the pay wasn't right, so that wasn't gonna work out. A couple of others might be, so anyway, um, but, but there is some movement there.
Okay, that's good news. Uh.
I did, I did suggest to him, so it, the, the, there wasn't, initially, there wasn't much happening. And there weren't, it, it didn't really look like, I mean, there weren't very many applicants, and the ones that were applying really weren't particularly qualified, so I did suggest to him that if things continued in that vein, that, you know, maybe you'd have to think a little bit more creatively about how to bring in some people that perhaps either didn't have the experience or the licenses necessary, but you know, were otherwise good folks and could be trained and, you know, the town might be able to help them to get their licenses over time, so. You know, we talked briefly about that, and he wasn't. But in any event, since then, since that conversation that we had earlier last week, you know, there've been some, what looked to be some, uh, uh, decent candidates that have applied.
Uh, I don't know if I can go there, but I will anyways. Uh, now, with the, with the union contract, is there anything, have you looked at that, or is there anything like saying that if we put on a new hire, they, they got to, you know, like, if we're paying for them to get a CDL or hydraulic license or uh, something like that, that they have to stay employed for a minimum of, uh, three years or five years, whatever, to pay back the town for?
I, I'm not aware that there's anything in the contract that says that. I, uh, I mean, I looked very quickly at the contract a couple of weeks ago. Um, but you know, whether there is or there isn't, uh, you know, if there isn't, and if that's something that you folks are interested in entertaining, you can certainly do it, you would have to bargain it.
Yeah.
As part of the contract, but that doesn't prohibit you from uh, from doing it, from bringing up the topic, um, and from seeing, you know, what what the union has to say about that. I certainly think that, uh, it's worth a conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, cause, you know, I, I was thinking that, uh, with the union contracts that I worked on when I was in the Kingsburgs, there, that was part of the negotiation, but I didn't know if it was, you know, open to the negotiation in the contract with the Highway Department. Well, that's come up, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. No, I just wanted, no, no, I, I. Get real, yeah.
Dave said he'll be here next Monday as well, too.
Who, who?
Dave, well, then.
Oh, yeah.
So he could talk to him, but.
Yeah.
Well, um, yeah, and, and just so you know, uh, we, we did receive um, the request to bargain from the union rep today, so. I forwarded that to Kara earlier today.
Yeah.
And, um, so, you know, that's good, and, uh, they're looking for a whole laundry list of information.
Yeah.
To, to get things started, which is normal.
Oh, good.
So I let him know that, you know, they addressed, they addressed the email and the letter to Christopher, and I just let him know that, you know, Christopher's moved on and that I'm here for a short time, and, and that I, I, hi Kara.
Hey, Ira.
And then I, like I just said, I did forward the same email to her, to Kara.
Thank you for that. So, you have any questions on the, uh, expenditures?
On the expenditures? Yeah, but I do, no, I did not have any questions.
There's nothing there that I saw. Okay, so I make a motion that we accept the expenditures of Purdue, seconded.
On favor?
Ira. The boss is back, Ira. We're doomed.
What did you just do? Approve warrant thirteen?
No, Department of Expenditure Report, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, so, Ira.
Yes.
Tell us about your finds for the, um, if you don't mind.
We're up to three A, right?
DA report? Yeah, three A, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, so you wanted all my, the results of my, uh.
Yes, please.
Background checks. Um, so I spoke with both candidates, they're both still interested, or at least they were as of, uh, last week. Um, I, uh, was able to reach all of the, uh, references that were listed by each of them, and, um, also spoke with a couple other folks that were not on their list. Nothing out of the ordinary came up, there were no red flags, really, um. I can, if we start, we start with Mark Seeger's, um, spoke with Tom Scanlon from Scanlon Associates today, he's an auditing firm that uh, used to do Blandford, and, um, he has worked with Mark for several years, he um, thought he would be an excellent TA for the right town. Um, he said he did a, a very impressive job of professionalizing um, all aspects of the operation, particularly of the, um, Fire and Water District, the Lanesboro Fire and Water District. Um, but was also, uh, uh, a real key partner in negotiating things, um, for the, uh, the, you know, the other association that was involved with the mall. Um, he felt that he, he, he documents everything um, and very detail oriented. Um, I asked Tom, uh, about the, uh, why is the name not coming to me? The, the the Street Association, that, the, the Association with the Mall, I didn't write that name down, but in any event, it, it looked to me like there was maybe the potential for a conflict of interest there, because Mark had acted as legal counsel for Pyramid Corporation that owned the mall for ten years, and then flipped over and was on the other side of the street with, uh, you know, the Street Association. Um, and if there would be any sort of a con, if there was any sort of conflict, and sure enough, um, that issue actually came up, it went to the Inspector General. Um, there was an additional audit done, and everything was a hundred percent clean, there was ab, absolutely nothing. Um, that was of any concern to anyone as a result of that. I spoke with Laura Brennan from uh, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, which is the sister association to PVPC, but for Berkshire County. Um, it had been several years since working with him, she thought maybe about six years. Um, but she worked with him on a grant to study the reuse of the mall, Baker Hill Road District is what it was. So he arranged for a match to a grant that they were able, uh, to receive that was very helpful. He was their point of contact. Um, he facilitated the process, she felt, uh, very well. And, um, she, uh, characterized him as being, uh, very community minded. Um, Joe Poplarsecik from Ty and Bond. Um, his interaction is with the Fire and Water District, he's worked with Mark on a few different projects. Um, he also said, always looking out for the best interest of the district, detail oriented, he used those same two words. Um, uh, what's my, I can't read my handwriting. Um, oh, a, a wealth of, uh, development experience, that he, um, as an attorney, not only, uh, with those two organizations, but just, uh, in his professional, other professional career. It, he has a lot of development experience. Um, all three, and actually all four of the ones that I talked to, I, I asked, I specifically asked the question um, if he, al- although his his, um, title with both groups is as legal counsel, said it struck me that he acted as much as an administrator. Um, you know, in, in the absence of anybody else that would be an administrator for those groups, and they all said yes, that um, that's actually what he did. Um, Joe has known him for about five years. And then, um, one that was not on his list of references, I just called the, uh, Water Department, I spoke with Kevin Swale, who was the Water Superintendent. He's known him for about nine years. Um, characterized him as very professional, interacts with him in mul, uh, multiple times every week, so that is pretty indicative of, he's not just their legal counsel, cause there would be no reason to talk to legal counsel multiple times every week. Um, and that he's involved in all aspects of the operation of the district. Uh, so the other, um, candidate, Michael, um, talked with Richard, Rick Davenport, who's the Fleet Manager in Enfield, um, which is the last job that, uh, Mr. Slasek had, um, he really raved about him. He thought he was really terrific. Um, and, uh, you know, that the job was just eliminated as a result of needing to, for the town to tighten their belts, and um, so they have, it's, it's actually a very, it's a very large DPW department that they have. Um, they do a lot more than just, and, uh, stop me if I've already told you this, I.
You did.
I, I did, okay. Um, did I, I, I talked with John Kilcoyne, who's a former Select Board member in Sterling. Um, he's retired CPA. He, uh, also spoke highly of, um, Michael, um, said that, um, he left there of his own accord, it was really just a matter of the amount of driving that he was doing, and, uh, it was his understanding that he was dealing with some uh, family medical issues at the time, so he had to step back from that. Um, John DeCruz is, uh, the Town of Ludlow. He's a former member of the Select Board. Um, he was not involved, and neither one of those individuals, either in Sterling or in Ludlow, were involved in hiring Mike, but were there while he was there. Um, he felt that, um, Mike had a good grasp of town government. If, you, you, you might recall that he is, he's remained very involved as, basically as a volunteer in Ludlow, in municipal government, and he's currently the town moderator. He's knowledgeable, detailed, uh, would provide detailed reports. Um, and, uh, oh, uh, he wasn't sure why he left. Um, it's my understanding in talking with a couple of other people in Ludlow that, um, he, uh, there was a change in the board, um, there were some I guess disagreements about certain things. And that, uh, you know, no, nobody was willing to tell me exactly why, but it was, the handwriting was more or less on the wall that he was not gonna be reappointed. And so he, he chose to left, to leave, and that's when he took the job in South Hadley for that short period of time. Um, I think I already spoke to you about Jody Zepke, the Council on Aging Director, that, in Ludlow.
Yeah.
Did I? Okay. And what about Bill Mahoney, HR Director in Springfield?
Um, I believe so.
Okay, he's, he, he, um, actually, I'm not sure about, I think, well, anyway, I'll, I'll just let you know that he, so he's the HR Director for the City of Springfield. Um, he's also a former member of the Select Board in Ludlow, and he's also spoke highly um, of Mike. And, uh, everybody, you know, across the board felt that, you know, he could do a good job for the town, a strong financial background. Um, and of course, you know that both of them have, uh, are lawyers, so they, you know, obviously, um, while they, it, it would be a conflict for them to be the town's legal, uh, you know, legal counsel, um, they can certainly be helpful in navigating legal issues, you know. Um, so that's what I got.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, sounds good. Now we gotta decide.
I know. So, I guess, so the first question, do we feel comfortable with either of the, um, candidates in front of us, or do we feel like we wanna go back out to?
I don't wanna go back out and start all over again. What are your feelings? Not thinking about it.
I know.
I smell wood burning. Put it out, it must be yours. Well, I like one of the guys that's moved out about it, but if there's other people out there that we overlooked because we didn't take the time, I think that would be naive on our part, personally.
Why do you think we didn't take the time?
Just a little, I, I, you, would you go buy a house and pull it out, looking at it?
What?
I, I'm just using that as a reference.
No, I mean, I'm wondering what you mean by that.
Well, I just think this has been, what, two weeks? We've been talking, two weeks isn't much.
Well, the process started with the subcommittee.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, I, I.
So I think, how many, I'm just, I'm just trying to pick it out, I think we got, what, how, like, eight applicants, and then altogether, we did some out, and then the subcommittee interviewed, how many did you guys interview, Joey, and four, I?
Oh, at least six, okay, yeah, I know. So they weeded that down to three, right?
Um, so I do think we've done due diligence as far as searching, um. I just don't know if we're gonna come up with together.
I don't either.
Um, agreeing on something. I just, I might, I'm not feeling like gung ho, like, a hundred percent.
Yeah, well, I guess that's what I'm saying about myself, like, oh, someone's just saying, that's all, just.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I just, I'm uncomfortable with renewing the process. I mean, we got two candidates that are both well qualified. I mean, you know, that's like, you know. What's arguing with you? No, I know, and, and the thing that, I, the way I'm looking at it, you know, are we gonna go out and go fishing for a bigger fish, or are we gonna accept what we got? And I think between these two gentlemen, uh, we have about as best as we're gonna see, where, I don't think we're gonna find, uh, Christopher or Josh or Ira.
I think that's where, yeah, we're, we're all feeling a little stuck.
Yeah, you know, and
Yeah.
I think these, both these guys are old, older, so their commitments are, you know, not like, uh, Christopher and, and Josh, where they got young families.
Yeah.
And they're not old like Ira, no offense. I thought he was gonna say like him. Oh, I already know I'm old.
So both of them, we look at, have about five or six years until they plan to retire, so that's pretty similar for both of them. Um, I have, for, um, Michael has experience specifically as a TA, um, where Mark doesn't necessarily have that experience, but, um, has done a lot of work, uh, budget work, and I'm working with Senator Lay, I noted. Um, so that was kind of a, a bonus for me with Michael, and he's been a TA, he has that experience. Um, I'm just going through the questions. Um, so I gave, on that one, I gave, um, Michael three and a half, and I gave uh, Mark's a two on that response. I felt like he didn't really, he kinda went off on a tangent, didn't really answer the question too much for the first one, why he's interested. Um, we have the second question about management style. Um, Michael had responded with, um, working collaboratively, regular meetings, um, with the department heads. Um, all, working with all, um, one time a month meeting with, I'm sorry, one time a month meeting with department heads regularly to see how to help. Um, not many problems he hasn't been able to, hasn't seen or worked his way through. And then with Mark, his management style was using current resources, figuring out where everyone, um, fits in, encourage meet their needs. Um, knowledge, he had good knowledge of free resources. Um, he was asking if people made mistakes that he could know, he would know immediately so that he could help them move forward. Um, I gave him three on that, and I had a four for Michael. Um, the next one was asking him about the budget process, so this one I think is important. Um, Michael has a lot of experience with that, I feel like he laid that out perfect. I gave him a five, he literally said, I do this in this month, and this is, and whatever. Um, Mark talked about state level budgeting, but I didn't hear any specifics, so I gave him a one. Um, looking at the next one, the grant funding, Michael had, um, a lot of knowledge as to who specifically to coordinate collaborate with. Um, he did talk about hiring a grant manager for larger grants, and that kind of threw me a little, because obviously that's not something that we're interested in in Blandford. Um, I gave him a three and a half, and then. I gave him a three and a half. And then Mark talked about. USDA loan forgiveness. Um. He talked about, uh, he knew about programs, but didn't. So he talked about programs that he knew, but he didn't really explain any six, the successes that he had. Um, like he didn't talk about grants that he had successfully um received, so I gave him a, a two.
You must be a teacher, you're hard.
Ready? High expectations.
Did you ever, did you see any hats on any of these? She go, I gave him a three and a half.
I know. I have right in the middle, I couldn't say.
I could put that up as a school teacher.
Yeah, yeah. All right, um, looking at question number five, uh, this is about the procurement pro, uh, process and contracting. So Michael, um. I gave him a five. He has been certified to, to be a procurement officer. He was very versed in the laws. He stays current with them, and then he referred back um. To, what does it say? I don't know if that's, every bit and contract reviewed by him. Um, I gave Mark a one, because I didn't feel like he explained any of that. I felt like he was pretty lost in that process. So that would be a concern for me, I guess, with Mark, would be the procurement um process, although he is a lawyer, I'm sure that he is so. I didn't feel that he answered the question. I just gave like a. I didn't even understand what you were just talking about. Um, all right, then next up was um open meeting law, public records. I gave Michael five, uh, very knowledgeable about meeting law. He spoke with confidence. Um. He seemed aware of all sides, um, and balanced, and then. Mark talked about meeting minutes. Um. I felt like, I wrote this, I felt like he was lecturing and didn't really, uh, telling stories, and he didn't really answer the question. And then seven, I have, um, the question is most sensitive. That have affected um your relationship with your team. Um. I thought Michael answered that really well. He talked about personnel issues, um, keeping things confidential, balancing things, being aware of all sides. I didn't look by. Um, Mark talked, he didn't answer how he resolved issues. Um. He talked to, I wrote, he talked about walking away from something. That was a question for me. Um, next one is qualifications, uh, that they have that sets apart. Michael wrote, um. He had, is careful administrator, he's done all the jobs, he has MBA in finance, municipal law expert. Um, reducing the cost of legal work by doing some of it himself for us. Um, Mark said he will get projects done quickly, and he loves.
Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest? Do a lead in these forests?
No, I think what he means is if there's some legal questions that we have.
Oh, wow, that's not what it sounded like, that's like that.
Um, and then lastly, it's um. The difference between management leadership. Um, so Michael said management, the process. Processes in place so things run smoothly. And leaders demonstrate when things go south, keep their head when all others are losing theirs. And Mark said a leader has to be able to manage, and he wrote, he told us a story about the water district and how he got money and managed. So I think my overall theme was. I felt like Michael was very to the point. Clear and concise, easy to follow, and for me, Mark kind of did these tangents that. Felt like.
So what you're calling up, that you would like to offer the position to Michael?
I feel more comfortable with Michael, because, I mean, I feel like they're both capable of the job, but I just felt like. Michael was more. Maybe efficient in his ability to like. Clearly and concisely answer questions without straying. So there is like, for me, I'm looking at like time efficiency, like is he's in the office getting the work done? Or is he like telling stories about, you know, I, I don't, I'm not trying to judge, I'm just like. Looking at. Kind of the personality of those. So that's. Kind of what I, what I was thinking. Um, but Mark was very likable, and that's probably a part of, you know, one of his, his references was that he is, you know, he's very community minded, and he's very, you know, likable, and he would probably make connections with people. Um, I don't know if Michael will make as many connections. Um.
So do I, do I, do I need to flip the quarter around, or?
I, you know. I think, like you said, they're both capable of doing the job. If I'm looking at efficiency and like. And I'm looking at that budget question, and to me, like, that really hit home, the way Michael answered that budget question. It was like September, October, November, December, like. Laid up. And I felt like Mark was like, well, I've done it, and you know, I just didn't get a clear answer from him.
So. What, what you're leading up to is that you would like to offer Michael.
I would prefer to offer.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. So a discussion, do you have something to add?
I may not have a vote in this, but I agree with that as well. My, but my job depends on it.
Our job depends on it, that's really does. And she, you know, took part in the Subcommittee. Did you have a comment, Mary?
How is, can Michael? Adjust sufficiently to work with? A part-time entity? We're, we're all part-time, and he's used to dealing with. Bigger full-time.
Yeah.
And that's that, you know, in, in, in the interest of efficiency. We may want that. But can it be achieved with what we have to offer?
What do you think, Ira?
You know, I, I think that. He has spent more of his, all of his time working in larger communities than Blandford. However. Uh, at least in a couple of instances, certainly in Sterling. Uh, to a lesser degree in Uxbridge or Athol. You, you know, they're, they are smaller communities. They're not. Nearly as small, but there's, they're not, they're, they're by, by no means. You know. Huge municipalities, and they're in all of those communities. Um, there's plenty of volunteerism. There are lots of people that. Are hired on a part-time basis. Um, so it's, it's a matter of scale. But I think that he certainly knows what he would be getting into. In Blandford.
Worked in small, you know, Lanesboro's not.
It's not very big.
It's not very big, but it's not, it's certainly not the size of Blandford, Lennox, Pittsfield, Agwans, Springfield, I mean. I think that. Having the skills and background, Michael seems like he would be capable of.
And I'm sure he can adapt.
Yeah.
You know, I.
And we have a good staff working for us. Our, you know, our, our financial staff is, is in a great place here. I think that um. They're very professional. And can work well with, you know, I would assume.
I, if I could just interject, that's, that's a really good point. Um, although. All of the. Financial team is outsourced. Uh, and they're only in Blandford on a part-time basis. They all work in their job capacities full-time.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not like other. Towns of similar size to Blandford that. Are not outsourced. I mean, this, this is the two-edged sword of. You know, do you outsource or not? The benefit of what you're doing. Is that you have full-time staff that is fully. On board with what they're doing. It's, it's all that they do all day long. They just happen to do it for a variety of. Of communities. And so from that perspective. Uh, somebody like Michael, who might be used to working with a full-time. Accountant in Athol, let's say, or, you know, a treasurer, what have you, where. In another smaller town, that person might only be fifteen or twenty hours a week. And would not be available all the, all of the time. Um, I think that. Fits into. Uh, Mike's experience. More than in other small towns.
Mary?
Enfield has a population of four thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Ludlow. Twenty-one thousand. And Lanesboro, three thousand.
Yeah, but I don't think that's gonna be a huge bear either. I don't, like we were just saying, we have. Full-time professional, you know, financial people. Um, it's just a matter of coordinating when you're meeting with them. I don't think. I don't really perceive that as a huge, especially someone who's filled a position before and.
That should be one of the questions on our questionnaire.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Next time, let's not jump ahead to that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, thinking, you know.
Yeah.
Hopefully, six years from now.
Exactly.
You're still there.
No, ah, thank you.
Jeff and I will be. Raising crops.
Yeah, no.
Climate control. I was trying to call it.
So what do we think? Do we want to vote on this?
Yeah.
All right. So all in favor?
I, I move that we uh.
So we have the motion for um Michael, and then we will um discuss contract negotiation in executive session. Like this.
Right. So I say yes.
I would say yes.
That big no for me. Write that down, Jeff, big no. Gotta use B I G.
So. Motion carries. Um. The end of the meeting, we'll go into executive session, we'll talk about what we want to do for a contract negotiation. I think it's on here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, um, did we approve the warrant yet? All right, this is the one I read and signed. All right, Joanne? Oh, no, you just need me to sign?
You do through the gaps.
Okay. Oh, are these ones the bills I came in and signed? No?
That's the current warrant.
This is the payroll?
No, payroll's not there.
Okay, payroll's next week, probably, I saw the word there.
That is.
Who said?
Select Board, Water is there, they have to be signed. Payroll will be signed next week.
Yeah. And, and to the Water Board, can back us with any idea what they're gonna do about their charter?
They're gonna meet with us next week.
I don't know.
Okay.
We went to Ira, okay.
Um, yeah, they're gonna be listening.
Oh, on the eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, so all they put on the agenda for the eighth was uh discrepancy with an invoice. So as long as you know it's gonna be longer than then.
Yes. I'm sure that it will be. Yeah, so I did. I mean. When I came in and I looked at some of the wire bills. I'm just. You know, as long as we. Joanne, and we made sure that there was nothing going into the. The uh grant. So we'll have to talk about that for them. All right, this one hasn't been signed by anyone. This is the. Looks like a rebate.
Yes, there, there are excess checks in there, and there's also um a couple of checks that had to be voided and raised. So there should be four things to sign for the warrant, so.
Thank you. Oh, wait, hold on, wait down.
How did we miss these? You.
So I wish.
Throw you right under the bus, teaching.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number thirteen for payment. Sorry. Any discussion?
Hmm.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, and then we've got St. Patrick's Day parade. Is it already time to make that decision? I feel like we just did that, Joanne. Do we want to do it again? How we feeling?
I don't know.
I mean, as long as it's not cold, can we make it contingent on weather? You were in the car last time.
Yeah.
I will not wear my dog again, the snow. That was a nightmare.
Spying in the truck, right?
Without daisy. Would have been fantastic. All right, so do we need to send in? Do we have paperwork to send in for the um parade?
Yeah, I think. I'm supposed to give it to you.
Um.
If I recall, if I recall, it's, they're, they've gone to an online. Registration. I, I'm pretty sure that's what I saw.
Right, I know a guy. Um. I wish we had a parade committee.
You're right here, pretty much. We're all set.
Um, so do we want to, uh, Joanne, will you just let fire and um. Fire Highway and Police know that we're, we will march in the parade again, if you want.
Yep.
And then anyone out there who wants to join the St. Patrick's Day Committee and represent. Please. Calm down. Question, Mary?
Yes, please. Um, you're gonna go into uh executive session to come up with a, a.
Contract.
Salary contract. To offer. And that will be made tonight to Michael?
Yeah, uh, we will um ask Ira to go forward.
Okay, and somebody please let me know.
What happens?
What happened?
He probably won't know tonight, I'm sure, but um Michael will come back with negotiation.
Okay.
Um. But yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, motion to go into executive session pursuant to GLC thirty A section forty-one A two to conduct. Spreading sections in preparation for negotiations with possible selected candidate for town administrative position, not to reconvene.
Second.
Kara says yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
All right, I can watch the question. Thanks. What was this? I don't think, oh, this is.